Well, good afternoon, everyone. And thanks for coming along to this special audit committee meeting. We have a single agenda item and we have two hours in the diary to deal with that. I'm hopeful that's enough and you never know, we might even finish ahead of time. So if we just move on, deal with the formalities. So to so welcome to the Deloitte team, Pat, Matt and Connor. And welcome also to Paul Stollard, a new board member and new audit committee member. So this is his first meeting, so welcome, Paul. We have no apologies, Ali, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah, that's correct. Just to confirm as well, sorry apologies then, I think you included Matt and the Deloitte team. But obviously that's it, it's just to confirm for the record, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anything that we feel that we need to be taking in private? We're taking this report in public. So is there any suggestion that we shouldn't, anything in it that allows us, that suggests that we shouldn't do that? No, okay, well, that's fine, let's let's crack on. Can I check, are there any declarations of interest? No, I think, well, I mean, as usual, should anything occur through the course of the meeting, then please let us know. So we have the single item on the agenda, which is the wider scope audit from Deloitte. And I want to thank Pat, Connor and the team for producing this. What is a wide ranging report, there is no doubt, even though it's over four broad headings, it's pretty wide ranging. It's always helpful to have a eye cast on an organisation from an outside source. You know, because it gives us an important perspective and that that should always be helpful. Even if on occasions it might feel a little bit uncomfortable at times, but I think that's just part and parcel. I understand it's been a bit of a lengthy process to get here. But in in reading the report, it certainly feels as if it's got to a good place. I'm keen to allow, you know, plenty of time for questions and discussion. But before we kind of move into that, I'd like to ask you, Pat, or perhaps Connor, to just introduce the report. And if you could say a little bit in that introduction about why, why we have it. But also if in your assessment, could you tease out what you consider to be the key priorities or key risks? It would be helpful because I think that might enable us to sort of focus on particular things. And I'm also keen particularly for those key issues to really try and understand what best practice looks like. So if in the course of that introduction, you don't necessarily have to cover it there. But as we go through the discussion this afternoon, it would be really helpful. Where are you able to give us some examples of what good looks like around these these areas? And hopefully where it's working in practice, so that if we need to, perhaps we can go and actually see it firsthand. So that's all I want to say by way of introduction. So over to you, Pat, just to to give us an introduction to your report.
Okay, thanks Chair. I'll cover a bit about why, your first question there, why we have it. And and then I'll get Connor to drill down a bit more on the, what we see as the key issues, risks coming out of the of the report. So why we have it is basically, the wider scope is a key part of the dual responsibility of the public sector audit model in Scotland, per the Audit Code of Practice. So that dual responsibility is to annually certify the financial statements as to whether they're true and fair. Also to conduct a risk based wider scope approach, wider scope assessment during the period of the audit appointment. So that, so what we've done with other clients, and we started this off in our local government clients a year or so ago, is that we now tend to issue separate reports on the two main audit responsibilities. Just because it gives the, you know, it gives the prominence to the two aspects. And you don't, you don't lose one when you're, you know, one, the focus of, for example, in the wider scope, when you're including that in the financial statement as a 260 report. So I think our clients have given us good feedback on that approach. And given that it emphasizes the prominence and the importance of the wider scope. And the fact maybe today that we're having a separate meeting just covering the wider scope, I think possibly illustrates that, that it gets that prioritisation and emphasis within the organisation. So this wider scope report covers those Audit Code of Practice responsibilities in terms of financial management, financial sustainability, value for money, governance and transparency, and wrapping that all into our best value assessment. And I'll hand over to Connor in a second to go through some of the detail. But I would just like to emphasise that there are many positive elements within this report. I don't see this report as overly critical, certainly from my perspective. I think there are many, many positive elements within the report and I hope that the committee can see them. But we have identified in all the areas of the wider scope remit, where we think there is scope for improvement within the organisation, where there is scope to build on best practice and to draw on that best practice and to improve things even further. So that was all I was going to say as a sort of general introduction. I'll ask Connor to cover a bit more of the detail of the report and also cover share those key issues and risks that you highlighted in your introductory remarks, if that's okay, Connor.
Thanks, Pat. Yeah, so over to you, Connor, please.
Yeah, so as as Pat said, there's the four separate elements of the audit dimensions that that we consider as part of our work. And their financial management, financial sustainability, governance and transparency and value for money. And they all link in together into what we refer to in audit jargon as the best value universe. And kind of inform our overall best value opinion. And the kind of key conclusions of those are set out on page four and five of your pack. And essentially set out, financial management generally is effective. So financial management, what we're looking at that is whether or not financial management is effective, whether budget setting and monitoring processes are operating effectively, and whether there's sufficient financial capacity within the organisation. So to inform our opinion on those, we considered current year financial performance, savings plans, financial reporting, financial capacity, internal audit and standards of conduct, professional fraud and error. And as I said, they're generally effective. However, we did feel that there's room for improvement in how savings targets are set out. So for example, setting out in the budget and the monitoring report, kind of what the targets are, what plans are in place to achieve those targets, whether the savings are being achieved, whether they're recurring or non recurring, and have any savings achieved in the year, kind of aligned with the requirements identified in the medium term financial model and long term financial strategy, to allow you as board members and management to understand how the short term decisions and actions being taken are actually improving the longer term position facing the service. Equally in terms of the budget, while performance against the budget was that was quite effective and the revisions to the budget were due to COVID-19 and additional external funding, so not indicate any issue with the budget setting process itself. And we did feel that improvements could be made to the actual budget document itself. For example, setting out key assumptions, key risks, had a budget progress, progressive services delivery outcomes and had it linked to those longer term strategic documents and the workforce and strategic resourcing plan. And we're aware of that information is provided separately to to the board and separate information days and strategy days. But that, that should be slightly clearer in the actual budget document that the board itself is approving. And one point to draw, which is really the only point where ourselves and management disagreed on a recommendation, which in itself is not entirely unprecedented, is in regards to financial capacity and the structure of finance. So obviously, finance structure is an operational matter, kind of who is in where and what grades they're at is an entire operational matter. However, through our work on best value all this multiple sets of organisations where researches take place, it is something we routinely see being reported to a committee or the board itself because finance essentially is fairly pivotal to enabling the board to deliver the strategic outcomes, particularly as the Scottish government moves towards an outcome based funding approach over the medium to longer term. And regards to financial sustainability, that essentially is going concern but extended over quite a number of years. So we look over the short term financial balance, whether there's a longer term financial strategy, whether investment is effective. And so we've considered, again, budget setting, capital planning, asset management, medium to long term financial planning, transformation strategy, recovery from COVID and workforce planning. Based on the information included in the budget and information you have to date, it's not really possible that we want to conclude whether the service can achieve short term financial balance, which is this coming year, 2122. Changes have, we did note the changes that have been made to the budget every single year since 2017, 18, each year reducing the level of information included within the budget by a very small amount, which in our view, since that period have actually, in our view, really substantially reduced the effectiveness of the budgets, the strategic documents. And kind of the lesson for that for most, I suppose, is that the board needs to make sure that it's mindful of changes to reporting and the approach to international development is still being provided and not relying on assumed knowledge or all that happened in the past would probably happen this year again, even if it hadn't been reported to us. Regards to capital planning and asset management, the services undoubtedly faced with legacy issues. If ever even taken that into account, we recommend that the capital programme be enhanced by setting out how it actually ties into the asset management strategy and the long term financial strategy. Because both of those documents essentially set out that without a certain level of investment, there will be a knock on impact on the resource budget. And it has an impact on the decisions the service can take, but that information is not presented. So it's not possible for the board to understand the knock on impact of that lower than required investment. And so while the service does have a strong record of accurate capital budgeting, the high level nature of it essentially means that the board cannot have assurance as to whether individual projects are being delivered on time and on budget, just like the overall package and overall budget is being spent in that year. With regards to the actual longer term financial planning, the long term financial strategy is really a good practice. It's a really excellent document. However, it's not linked to ongoing decision making, it's not referred to at all in any document that I reviewed and it's not reported against. So really all to be linked to that medium term financial model, the capital programme, the workforce strategic resourcing plan and the resource budget, so that the board and management can say everything ties in together. With regards to governance and transparency, looking at governance, whether that's effective, whether at least it's effective, whether decision making is transparent and whether it's transparent reporting. Overall, we have viewed that leadership within the services is effective. And so there definitely kind of executive management and changes in the year. For example, for the Service Development Director, we'd be really welcome and kind of give a heightened focus on the change that needs to be made within the service and we would really welcome that. We are satisfied too that governance is generally effective. Appropriate plans were put in place in response to COVID-19, although they weren't necessarily used in the end, which is a positive thing. And they weren't needed. And the service does have a comprehensive set of governance documents and a large number of supporting policies. The message we took away though from from this work is that while the service does have lots of these documents, which individually are aligned with good practice, it's the linkage between them that seems to be missing and they're reporting against them and how they actually impact on short term decision making and how that impacts on the longer term options facing the service. So it took a lot of work for us to kind of review each document and say, but how does that tie into this? How does that tie into that one? And as board members and as management, it would take you a lot of time to do that yourself without a lot of assumed knowledge. And so it's linking all of these documents together, which really is the next step. And that's kind of the key national management, that sustainability and also within governance. With regards to openness and transparency, generally the service is a very open and transparent organisation. We did feel however, that the decision taken by the service in response to COVID-19 to not allow public access, while understandable in the short term, the premise on which that decision was based, that it wasn't feasible, no longer existed by August and that was presented to the board as that is now feasible. And actually, we felt at that point a decision should have been taken to allow public access and that didn't occur until March. And so the lesson, the sense in which ways that that, that could have been done quicker. However, obviously now that there is, these are put online, we still would question whether that meets the spirit of the legislation to be as open as practicable. Because we do know local authorities and other public bodies do now allow direct public access rather than access to recordings. So it's whether or not it's being open as practicable is the best you can put to the board. Now, with regards to value for money, we are looking at here essentially whether resources are being used effectively, whether services are improving or whether best value is being demonstrated. Obviously, whether services are being improving, we have to take that very much in the context of COVID-19 this year. The service does have a very clear and robust performance manager framework and it is aligned in many cases with best practice. It aligns to the national performance framework as well, which is really welcome. And it's clear and it's in an understandable manner how the action service to be captured. And really is an example of good practice that we would share quite happily with other organisations that we deal with. However, we do feel that the use of benchmarking, given that as a national organisation, would really enhance the the performance information. The service is broken down into strategic areas and then local, and these local authority area. And so what are differences in these areas that may mean that benchmarking isn't, you know, don't rely on it entirely and only that. It can be a useful piece of information with qualitative information provided and, you know, disclaimers and concur that about why perhaps some differences arise. In terms of the actual performance in the year, there was quite a lot of changes to the targets in the year and that was entirely to be expected, so not something we at all criticize us for this for. And COVID has had a significant impact on the service. The service is taking away the lessons to be learned and that's really welcome. The one thing we would say is going forward as the service does recover from COVID-19 is to consider how to standardise performance reporting. Performance reporting differs quite substantially depending on the different areas and different committees that it goes to. And so while some information, for example, has trend data, some doesn't. And doesn't seem to be a reason for why wouldn't that trend data, some includes qualitative information, some doesn't. And so the use of this information goes to different committees and to the board does seem to differ quite substantially depending on where it's going. And there doesn't really seem to be to us a proper reason for that. If it was standardised, it would make it more more useful for whatever is easier for us looking at different committees and so on as well to inform their own judgements and easier for management as well. And then the final point we considered here, value for money, was a specific point asked by Audit Scotland in the year, which was the services approach to qualities. The service has consideration of the qualities built in throughout its processes, tightly developed approach and embedded throughout strategic planning process. Essentially that the service is in quite a good position in that. We just highlighted that we better for reporting on the main sheet and report us to do on an annual basis, highlighted any improvements essentially from the previous year. And so this sort of work understand what progress is being made on that. So overall, taking all those things into account, the opinion we reached of that, the service does have sufficient range to secure best value and it does have a focused increase in improvement. However, there is a room for improvement in the internal processes for the service to identify by itself the areas for improvement and to itself implement those changes as well as in the pace of that improvement. And that's all I'd say, there is 28 recommendations that I want to take you through. As I say, management have accepted them all apart from one, which I thought I had there.
Okay, that's, that's really good, Connor. Thank you for running through that so quickly. It's much appreciated. Just one point of clarification, if I may, before I move on. I think it is in relation to three, recommendation 3.1, where you talked about having to review several governance documents. I'm not sure I entirely understood the recommendation, you know, to reduce the reliance on external bodies to identify areas for improvement. Could you maybe just repeat that or explain it in a different way, please?
Yeah, so through our work, we always identified that the anti fraud policy was significantly underdated and that was identified a couple of years ago last year by by internal audit and significant improvements needed to that. Where then there was an issue identified with kind of the, we felt that the decision not to call it meetings didn't fully comply with the standing orders. We felt that the code grew at this code of governance and that meant to be reported to to this committee and didn't really occur in the way it was meant to occur. And essentially, the services internal processes, we felt should have been sufficient to, because these are quite, quite important documents, should be sufficient to identify these issues when they occurred and prevent them or to correct them at a much earlier date than essentially waiting for internal audit or external audit or the Scottish government to come in and say, actually, you need to fix this.
Okay, I understand that, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, Martin, I don't know if if you want to provide some sort of initial response to that. I'm not really expecting anything in detail. I'm hoping the detail will come out of of questions and broader discussion. But I feel like I should give you the opportunity to respond.
Thanks, Brian, I'm not actually sure I should at the minute, but I'm going to as you've asked me. So Pat, Connor, it feels like you've come to us for the first time ever this year. Because the way you've approached this is completely different from the few years you've been here before. So I'm a little bit surprised at the way you've approached this. Whilst I have no issue with the recommendations, apart from the one that we disagree with and I think that's quite right to disagree with that one. I've actually felt your initial report was fairly condescending. And actually, I just feel the presentation, Connor, you just given is exactly the same. I started this meeting as a fairly calm place, I'm now no longer in that position. And I'm just surprised that you've got to the stage you've got to, having been a fairly experienced auditor with us before. And it feels like that you haven't picked up loads of stuff in the past that you probably should have done because I don't think a huge amount has changed in between the last 12 months.
Okay, thanks for that, Martin. Just before I bring you in, Lesley. I think I'm not going to invite you to respond to that, Pat. I mean, what I would prefer.
I would like the opportunity to respond at some point, Chair.
Yeah, 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 well, I think, I think if I may, what I'd like to do is is use the process of questions and discussion to try and unpack some of these things. Because I think we will hopefully see real examples where there appear to be issues. So if I may, just do it in that way. Martin, sorry, you're on mute.
Yeah, I have no issue with the content, it's the tone, Brian. And with both the written report and this one, which is actually really had been quite unhelpful. A huge amount of management time has gone into getting this report into a format that is actually helpful to the organisation. So whilst other public sector organisations may have found your your change in approach helpful, Pat, I don't think we have particularly, and it's required my team to spend a lot more time than they should have done in right, in in the sort of discussions and the written responses between you. So I'm quite displeased with the current position that we're in. Aside from the recommendations being absolutely fine, which is bizarre because you'd normally expect me to come out saying I don't agree with the recommendation. I've no issue with what you said, it's the way you said it.
Okay, right, I'll draw a kind of line there. But I will come back, Pat, and I will make sure that you do have the opportunity to to respond. But as I say, I would like to get into this through some questions and some discussions. So Lesley, you have your hand up, do you want to kick things off?
Thanks, Brian. I've been an audit audit committee member on a number of the, and indeed audit committee chair on other NDPBs. And it strikes me that we're actually not in an uncommon position here, where we have the auditors on one side and the executive team on the other side. And there are some points of difference, but more about concerns of different approaches. I think that it's very useful for us as audit committee members to just have a look at the recommendations, have a look at the management responses and just kind of see, okay, where are we going? My comments, I've got one specific question that I would just like Pat and Connor to to clear up quickly if they can. And then my interest is in just looking at the recommendations one by one, Brian, just if I've got time to do that and just see if we can, you know, get to an agreed position. What's been recommended, what are we going to do? And then it's over to Matt and ourselves to keep tabs on that. The one point I do want to question and is Pat and Connor, you make a pejorative comment about training. Can you just expand on that, please?
Could you clarify which, where you mean?
Lesley, could I, and if we have any questions, could I ask you just to try and reference, reference them back to the action plan so that we can keep track of things? So that that particular pejorative comment about training, Lesley, where will we find that?
I'm quite interested that you don't know it because it absolutely leapt out at me. And I'm speaking as a former director of Audit Scotland's responsibility for writing reports, not at organisational level, but at national level. The comment is on page 18, I'll let people get to it. So it's the bottom left hand column. I'll quote, "There is no reporting against the training strategy and overall it is difficult to assess whether it is actually being implemented or is just a strategy that SFRS have to attempt to show compliance with its legislative responsibility to train its staff." Now, as I say, as a former director of Audit Scotland, I'm going, oh, oh. And I actually think the wording in that comment is more reflective of Deloitte's than it is of the SFRS. I know the PIs and the measuring against the strategy is not where we want it to be. I've had discussions with the director of Pod on that. And so, but that comment in a report that is, is this still draft? And I think I would be very unhappy that that comment remains with that phraseology. And I don't actually think, even if you have evidence that actually underpins what you're saying, to use that phraseology is acceptable. Now, let me say that's the one instance that I've seen in this document, but it's a, to my mind, it's a flitting, as I say, it's unexpectedly pejorative and I'm, that's the understatement of the year for me. Can we just clear up that point and whether that will remain in the final report? With that cleared up, I would like then to go into just a very straightforward audit committee assessment of recommendation and management response, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lesley. Pat, Connor, could you respond, please?
You want to take that, Connor?
Yeah, I'm just trying to check, that was a point that was picked up by by management comments to us. And I'll check, confirm, because we just did go through quite a lengthy process as well in terms of.
In a, in a sense, Connor, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter if the point was picked up previously. I think Lesley has asked a fairly direct question. I appreciate it's maybe not comfortable to answer, but if you could try and respond, please.
Yeah, if the phraseology is the issue, we're happy to, as the management, very happy to consider phraseology as long as the kind of the message isn't diluted. And we did that with with the kind of response from management, happy to take any kind of message the committee says as well before we kind of submit the report to Audit, to Audit Scotland.
Thank you, I think the phraseology, it's what I'm taking from it. And absolutely, I can understand that it's not what you intended, but you're questioning whether the fire service takes its responsibilities for training its its staff seriously. That's what I took from it. So I assume that's not what you intended. So can you please look at the phraseology and perhaps tie that up with 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 management before submission to Audit Scotland? And I'm really glad that I've had the opportunity to pick that up. So thank you for your helpful response on that, Connor. Brian has said my other comments are just quite calmly on the recommendations and responses. I'm not sure whether you want a general comments. Well, let me give you my general comments and I'm not sure how you want to handle the recommendations. There's an awful lot in this report that I agree with, the transparency around savings, links between the key documents, need to consider the implications of not enough funding for asset management. The need for benchmarking within the different areas, I absolutely agree with. Need for, and as I said, the need for better performance management for the training strategies, those loads I agree with. Yeah, and my concerns are just about the kind of the clarity of the management response in directly addressing the recommendations. Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Leslie. What I want to do is just gather any general observations from committee members, first off. And then we can not necessarily run through every single recommendation, but run through the action plan. So Tim, Mari, do you have any general sort of observations that you'd like to make at this stage?
Shall I pitch in, Mari? I think I read it and felt that it was quite aggressive in some of its statements. So I think the phraseology side of things is important. Like Leslie, there are many things in here that I agree with, but I found some of the statements around judgments that the board had taken a little bit strident, shall we say. So for example, some of the statements around our position regarding the holding our meetings virtually, recording them and then publishing them post-meeting for public scrutiny. And I am on record as saying that I was uncomfortable with that. But I don't think that we shied away from discussing that thoroughly and coming to an agreed position on it. So I found the kind of strident statement around our perceived failing from the position of the auditors a little bit strong, shall we say, given that, because I think we did explore that and we did discuss it. We can take different views on that, but I don't think that there was sufficient nuance or balance in the statement around that. And there's lots of things, and I don't propose to go into all them, but there are lots of things across the report that I would take that same position on. They are matters of judgment, where I think we have exercised judgment as a board and come to a decision of perfectly defensible position. And I don't think it's appropriate for auditors to take such binary views on these things. They don't capture the approach that we've adopted as an organisation in responding to some of those challenges. So that would just be my general comment. But the only other one would be the inevitable one. Good to see professional service firms always climbing onto the climate change bandwagon. But there we go.
Okay, thanks, Tim, Mari and Paul, apologies. After Mari, I'll invite your comments. So over to Mari.
I suspect that Paul's will probably be far more eloquent than mine. I can almost hear Leslie's iris rolling, Tim, by the way, at the end of that. But anyway. I think there's nothing, a huge amount I would add. It's interesting that Tim picked up on that example, because it was actually the one I was going to pick up on as well. I kind of feel that there was a bit of a nuance missing in terms of really understanding the context of that's being in the context of COVID. And actually, without that context sitting in and around that, it feels a little bit. I don't know if it's really going to give the full picture. And I think that's the part that I find a little bit frustrating throughout on occasions. But I will have an issue with bluntness. I would agree with Leslie's point. I would be really concerned. That feels as though somebody's making a very personal statement about circumstances. And that isn't how something like this should read. And I don't think that's probably what was intended. But I think it's really, it is really difficult sometimes to be able to read something like that and to then not set a reaction that informs how you then read the rest of the report. So I think there's just little bits and pieces in that. But again, I would agree with everybody else. There's a lot in here that actually makes an awful lot of sense and rings true. I think that's what makes it slightly disappointing that on occasions, there's a little bit of some of the context that's maybe missing that would help to inform that understanding a little bit more. Yeah, that one, there's a few bits and pieces that have already been touched on that kind of stuck out to me. And I, yeah. I guess I would just agree with some of what Martin, Leslie and others have said so far.
Okay, thanks, Mari. And Paul, do you have any general observations you'd like to make?
Obviously, I don't know the history leading up to this point. Reading this as the first document came from the auditors, I actually thought this might be your first year of appointment from the way the document was written. What interested me was the number of action points in the plan. And when I tried to read those against the management responses, I found that in quite a lot of cases, to me anyway, the management response seemed to be saying, yeah, we accept the point, but in fact, we're actually doing this already in a sense. So there's two or three that I would pick out and I might want to ask a specific question about. But I don't really have enough knowledge of the history to make particular comment on this. I was very pleased to see that the fact that there was nothing where the management were disagreeing with, except for one, which I don't fully understand, but there was a lot of it, the management seemed to be saying, yeah, we're doing this, it's okay. And that was my overall feeling. But I've got a couple of minor points on specific ones when we come to them.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. That's helpful. And just my general observations. And Pat, you and I have had the opportunity to have a previous discussion on that. I think, and we haven't we haven't rehearsed this at all. I was genuinely inviting members to give a general kind of impression. And it's interesting, I think, because I, when I received the full report to begin with, it was the action plan that I looked at along with the draft management response. And I have to say, you know, what are the concerns here? Because I thought the recommendations were all pretty reasonable. I thought the responses were all pretty reasonable. But when I did go and read the detail in the report, it almost felt as if in some places, that there was a different conclusion being drawn in the narrative of the report to the more specific recommendation that was made. And I think there is an issue there in how the narrative is being presented in the report. And I think we always have to allow for the sensitivities of receiving a report on ourselves. And we will always be ultra sensitive to that. But I think there is still some examples within the body of the report that perhaps could have been written slightly differently. And my concern is that when this becomes a public document, people will pick up on specifics in that general kind of narrative. And found on that rather than the detail in the action plan. So I wonder, Pat, if I could just invite you to come in here. And I don't want a tit-for-tat situation to develop here, but I do feel I need to give you an opportunity to come back. And also to ask if there is any room still to manoeuvre on the narrative in the report to address some of these concerns, because I, you know, substance over form, it's the recommendations for actions that are important. The words are there to support that. So I'll back to you.
Okay, Chair. Absolutely. This is still a draft report. So if there's any specific areas of concern that the committee have, you know, particularly if it's just tone and wording and doesn't dilute the overall message, then I'm very happy to consider them. And going back to Leslie's point about the training approach, if that's the interpretation, that was not the intended meaning at all. Absolutely not. I don't want to respond tit-for-tat. I think, I still maintain that I don't think this is an overtly critical report. I could, I can think of two or three reports that we've issued already this year to other clients, which have been much more critical than this. I think it possibly comes back to that baseline of expectations. And I do accept that over the period of the appointment to date, this is an area where, and perhaps we could have communicated this better. This is an area that, you know, we always intended to probe in more detail near the end of our appointment. And that goes back to the comment about the first year of appointment. I think we were very conscious at the start of the appointment that it was still a very young organisation, very new organisation, that we needed time to bed processes and procedures in. And that an in-depth review like this, for example, in year one of the appointment, just would not have made sense. Going back to the chief's comments about management time taken to get the report to this stage, just to respond, it's taken a lot of audit time to get to this point. There's been lots of changes being requested. Very, very minor wording changes, which, you know, we were happy to incorporate. I think from memory, the management offered us 110 changes. And I think we accepted in excess of 100. So I think we have tried to respond to the management changes and the vast majority of the changes requested by management to the report, both in tone and in, you know, other areas, were accepted by us. So we have tried to respond to that. But as I say, Chair, I am very happy to accept changes where they don't dilute the message. But I would just quickly say that, you know, there was a few comments that the auditors don't have the right to express a judgment or an opinion, which I am a bit concerned to hear that from committee members. Fundamentally, we are the independent auditors appointed by Audit Scotland. And we can come to any judgment and opinion that we like. You might not like it, but we are entitled to come to that opinion. And I won't move away from that. This is an independent report. But we are very, and as I say, we have the right to make the judgments as we see fit, as long as it's the factual accuracy. And we went to strenuous attempts to do that. But coming back to your direct question, Chair, I'm very happy to emphasise that the report is still in draft. And if there are changes to tone, language, that the committee would like to see, I'd be very happy to implement them and to action that before the report goes final.
That's very helpful, Pat, and really do appreciate that response. And just to be clear, we were not implying that it's not your position as external auditors to make these judgments. But I think the benefit of the committee being able to look at this report along with the action plan is that we are seeing it through the eyes of non-executive directors. And one of our kind of deep interests is that we don't, it's in no one's interest to have a report which goes into the public domain that is open to interpretation and perhaps
Absolutely.
allows people to consider the organisation in an inappropriate light. Because that detracts from the real benefit of this piece of work being a support towards continuous improvement. You know, and that's, I think, what you get through the action plan. So if you'll indulge us, then we can collate views from the committee and I can feed those back to you. And then we can have a further discussion if that's agreeable.
That's absolutely 100% agreeable. No problem with that at all.
Excellent. Okay. Well, thank you very much for that. And in a sense, we've got that out in the open now. So we can now perhaps just go through the action plan. As I say, not in any great detail. So I'm particularly keen to understand the management responses and how they fully or partially address the recommendations. So I don't know, John, whether you feel it would, given that you're the principal author, I think, of these responses, for you just to run through these and give us your sort of summary of the recommendation and the management response, because I struggled a wee bit to understand whether the response fully addressed some of the recommendations, but I'm sure you can tease that out as you go through. So if you wouldn't mind doing that, please.
Okay, Brian, you've given me the opportunity here. So I have to also probably just give my overview of the position as well, because we have been through this with Deloitte. And I wanted to thank Deloitte for revising the report based on the feedback given today. So I think that's important. I also did recognise that they are forming their own independent view. And it's Deloitte's independent view that we're taking on board here. In terms of the recommendations in the main, as we've said already, it's, we accept the recommendations, but all the way through this particular engagement, it has been around the narrative around the report. And where we've seen it has been critical and perhaps harsh in terms of some of the wording around it. We've tried to feed some of that back. And Pat has taken some of those comments on board and reflect that in the report. I think one of the other lessons that we probably would want to highlight, that we would want moving forward, we would prefer greater engagement around this audit. And a lot of this came as, you know, output and then into the production of the report itself. And I think we would all have done better if we had had greater engagement around that. In terms of the recommendations, I know that you want me to kind of get to the response on those recommendations. In part, the management response reflects us trying to cover the overall action plan and trying to make a recommendation that say, look, we accept where you're coming from. If not, in some parts, a wee bit grudgingly, if I was being honest, because of some of the narrative in the report. So I say that not because we were trying not to be defensive, we were trying to see this as something that we take forward and take the improvement action forward. As Leslie and other committee members have highlighted, you know, there's things in here in terms of the improvement, we say, yep, absolutely, we do need to do that. So there's nothing wrong with that. So we've tried to capture that in the management response to say, well, look, here's some of the positions that where we see it. But also, we are accepting the overall conclusion of Deloitte. And we are accepting the recommendation. So I think we've tried to do that consistently. And as I said, the only place that we've not accepted it is at 1.7 on the financial capacity. And that's primarily because we certainly felt that it is an operational matter in terms of how a finance function is structured. It was pointed to on the basis of, oh, you've had a number of restructures in previous years. And therefore, that created doubt as to whether the financial capacity was appropriate or not. And I guess a response to that is, look, these restructures have went through the normal process, the same process that the organisation takes to any change of people and follows that HR process. And certainly when I discussed it with Liz Barnes, we were on the same page in terms of rejecting the recommendation, because it's just established, if you're going to do that with finance and ask a committee or a board to review, then do it with HR and do it with ICT and do it with others. So it didn't necessarily seem to be the right approach when we already have an established process as to how we create and approve structural change across the organisation. And so that was the main points that I wanted to highlight, Brian. I know that's not going through every single recommendation, but it probably reflects the kind of the feeling, if nothing else, that we have in terms of how we have tackled those management responses.
Yeah. No, indeed, John. And, you know, I can relate to what you say about that particular recommendation. So but in terms of what I'd like to do though, I mean, the recommendations are in chunks. So financial reporting, for example, could you just talk us through the response to the financial reporting recommendations? And whether, in particular, whether you fully accept the recommendation as written, or whether, because some recommendations, you say, agreed, others you're quiet on the particular point. And in others, if I read the narrative, it doesn't immediately relate to the recommendation. So, you know, so just running through them, I mean, if I take the very first one, just to illustrate the point, it's about the information that's presented to the board in terms of the completeness of that information. And my reading of the management response to that recommendation is it. And my reading of the management response to that recommendation is it, it sounds rather grudging. It it doesn't perhaps respond specifically to the recommendation. So is there an aspect of that recommendation that from a management perspective, you're not happy with?
So I I think I've been clear in the response. So what I've basically said is, look, what Deloitte have suggested is that the information that we have provided to the board in terms of the formal approval process at the board wasn't sufficient. And what we've then stated is, look, as far as we are concerned, we have a created a cumulative effect in terms of bringing the board up to speed with our budget preparations through both the information and strategy days. And that culminates in the approval of the of the budget. We think that is 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 adequate and and is and is acceptable. However, what I think the auditors are then saying is, well, if you're going to do that, you have to make sure that you you clearly reference what has gone before. And we are therefore accepting that point and saying, yep, you know what, we'll do that going forward. So I think we're trying to explain why we think the the budget and the approval of the budget was was correct and was sufficiently scrutinised. But also making the point that will make it clearer in terms of reference. So we're trying to cover bo- both sides of that.
Yeah, okay, well, I I don't want to leave at the point, but I think this is probably something that we we will need to discuss a little bit more about. So on on the heading of financial reporting, John, and if you feel you need to bring in colleagues, then then please do. But on the subject of financial reporting, is there anything in the framing of the recommendations or your responses that you feel unable to respond to? Because certainly Connor has has stated that the only one recommendation that you disagree with, and and you covered this as well, is is that one relating to the structure of the finance team. But it's not clear to me for some of the recommendations unless it expressly says agreed, whether you have fully agreed it. So perhaps just to clarify that in in one go, is that the only recommendation that you disagree with? Or are there other recommendations where you roughly agree with it, but you don't quite agree with it?
Yeah, so look, I'm not going to try and be as nuance or as, we are agreeing with the recommendations. It's the the narrative to to that gets towards that recommendation that that obviously gives us some concern. So please take it as a committee that we are agreeing with the recommendation and we will take the recommendation forward for for improvement. That's what was said in the response. And if it's not stated as as agreed, that doesn't mean or imply that we're not agreeing. I wouldn't, I would, I I would say specifically, we do not agree, and that's what we'll say then in in one point seven.
Okay, Mari and then Lesley.
Brian, my point actually takes us slightly further back. And it was a point that John raised that reminded me that I I meant to bring in my general one. And that was just to try and get an understanding around how, if at all, did COVID impact on the audit being undertaken? And I suppose there's an element for me about whether or not any aspects of John's point about the engagement earlier on, was any aspect of that impacted by the circumstances in which the audit was undertaken? And so as much as I was asking for some degree of context around COVID, do I also need to understand, when looking at the report and how it was undertaken, that there's a context to that too? I guess, more so than maybe as in the report possibly.
Okay.
I'll just say a bit about that, then Connor can come in. Yeah, I mean, absolutely, I think there is that context that has to come in typically. And it it may well go back to your point on engagement, because typically, we would do a piece of work like this. It'd be very much an interactive exercise on site. You would be bouncing things off the client, you would saying, well, what about this document? How does that tie into that? You would, you'd be meeting at the coffee machine, you know, and and maybe, you know, breaking things down like that. So I think that is a very fair observation. And and I've noticed that elsewhere, for example, we've just did a best value assurance review council. And that was done purely remotely in the COVID environment. And it does give you that these types of communication and engagement issues, which you would in normal times, if you like, you would have sorted that out in advance of the draft report coming out. I think that's a very fair observation.
And Pat, if I could just, Brian, just to come back, I think that the to my, for my, this is me voicing to some extent out loud. I think that also, when you're not on site, you don't, you lose those nuances, the coffee chats, the the sense of when you're interacting with individuals. So I think that helps me to understand to some extent. Thank you.
No, that's a helpful point, Mari. Thank you very much, and thanks, Pat. Lesley.
Thanks, Brian. I was comfortable with the recommendation and management response on two of the three financial reporting recommendations. So I was happy with one point one and one point three. Just a very quick question to John on one point two. The management response refers to workforce and strategic resourcing plan and LTFS. It just doesn't mention the strategic plan. Can we, you are planning to link the budget to strategic plan, can I just check that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay. Lesley, are there any, that's under financial planning. Moving on to the the next subgroup, which is savings plans. Certainly, my reading of that is there's there's no ambiguity there, it's all pretty clear. Would people agree?
I had a couple of queries in this, Brian, but again, they might be resolved just as quickly as that previous one.
Yep.
So on one point four, this is the linkages, and my question is, will the budget set out how the saving, the savings link to the medium term financial model and the LTFS? I don't think we're quite clear on that in the response.
So, Lesley, we've had discussions and I've talked about this as part of the kind of financial management side and around deficiencies. And and we definitely do have more to 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 give and and to offer around the efficiency side, side of things. And just as has actually been described there, we're already doing that work around, well, what was the 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 target in terms of the efficiency? What is the actual, how are we going to achieve it? The the point is that then links through into a medium term financial model and then into a long term financial strategy. And the answer to that is yes, we will be taking those things through.
Thank you for your clarity on that. Brian, on one point six, the rec- the recommendation is the annual budget should clearly set out efficiency targets, including where they are expected to be achieved. And the response says a RAG status will identify where the savings have not been achieved. And I wasn't sure, again, I think it's just a slight kind of, they're not quite addressing each other. So the bit that I'm questioning is, will the, can John confirm that the annual budget will set out the efficiency savings targets rather than just where they've not been achieved?
Yeah, so so just to be clear, the 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 position here was that we will have had in the budget some efficiency savings identified, where those efficiency savings have been achieved. Then we're not going to turn around and say, well, that's a rag status of red amber or green. It's it's more about where we haven't been able to identify something. Or somehow we're going off track, that we're going to associate the rag status around it. That would seem sensible to me in terms of approach. And that was how we referenced it back in terms of the audit recommendation. Because we we already build in those efficiencies into the budget. So if you've, if we say we're going to make a hundred thousand pounds saving, we've already taken it out of the budget. And therefore, if we achieve budget, we've made the savings because it was already built into it. So why would we, unless it's a variance, we would then associate the rag status against it.
I think the question for me, John, is the transparency of where the savings are coming from. What you're describing is we set the budget, we take the 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 savings out of the relevant budgets, and we only report where we're not achieving those. And my question is, I would be looking for a list of, here are the savings that we are incorporating within the budget. Here's where, here's what amount is coming from, from what area. That's what I'm looking for, and I'm not sure that that's what what you're saying we're going to get.
Okay, so I don't think that was necessarily the 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 position that we will present is a taking the the budgeted efficiencies, then identifying all the actual efficiencies. So if we've achieved more efficiencies in in each area, we will identify that, we we track it, and we will present that to the board. So we will give you full visibility of all the efficiencies. But we also picked up the point that Deloitte were saying around having a rag status around it. And all we say then is, yes, we will look to try and have a rag status around that. So I I think we are being without, I think we are doing exactly as what you are looking for, Lesley, in terms of the overall efficiencies.
Okay, right.
I think you are, John, but I have a a degree of sympathy with Lesley just over the wording of the when when you speak the words, I can see exactly what you're proposing to do. But I'm not sure the words on the page exactly say that. But the important thing is, what Lesley is asking for and what you say you're going to do is is actually consistent with the recommendation. So I I I think we're we're all good on that one. And and then that then takes us into the section on capacity, and I think we've dealt with that. I don't think we need to talk about one point seven any further. It is an operational matter and it and it should be. And then we have one point eight, which is in a similar vein, John. And I I mean, my observation on one point eight was, I I absolutely would stand by your judgment on this. My question was really, do you know enough about what's involved to respond to the recommendation? To be as confident as you are at the moment? Or do you need a little bit more time just to see how that begins to unpack itself? And, you know, it it's your judgment at the end of the day, I'm merely posing the question.
Yeah, I I think the response gives a little bit of latitude to me because it basically says that we we will look to make sure, we think we've got sufficient capacity. We think we've got the right skills to to take forward the recommendation. If we find that we don't have that, then we will seek external help or or the help of others to do that. And I think that's an appropriate place to be, and I'm and I'm happy and content with with that position, Brian.
Okay, okay. Just jump in, Lesley or or anyone else. I just wanted to say something about the internal audit, one of, if if I may. I I I was slightly surprised about the point being made quite in these terms because there's quite a lot of record where the committee have had conversations with the auditors, with the executive team. There has been a widely held recognition that we were behind the eight ball on this a while ago. But there's been significant effort applied to address that. And and it has been steadily being addressed. So I I I don't think it's an issue of not recognising this as a priority or not having the capacity to to deal with it. So I I guess from my perspective, something that felt a little bit more personal was was around this because we we know about it and we've been doing stuff about it. But as the recommendation says, I wasn't consulted on the recommendation, sorry, the response to the recommendation. But I'm quite happy, as Chair of ARAC, to to raise with assets to to come come back to that. But I I don't know, Pat, Connor, from your perspective, is it, is it kind of good practice to pick up something like this, which is already quite clearly recognised and being actioned and and give it such prominence in in the report?
I think just on this point, so the focus of the response here has very much been on internal audit. And the recommendation focuses on internal and external audit. And the reason you picked us up essentially is that we've made twenty eight recommendations here, it's a lot more than in previous years. And internal audit, I've made a lot of mistakes this year, and there's still a lot of standard recommendations. And there are quite tight deadlines on our recommendations, the management forward, and a lot of internal audit ones you can carry forward already. And so essentially, we're highlighting the risk that management have already said around, they have historically been too optimistic around their their dates they're proposing. And then the capacity to deliver those optimistic dates. And so I think we're highlighting the risk here in terms of as we go through these recommendations. And so essentially, when we then come back and look at these recommendations next year and progress with them, the response cannot then be, oh, we were too optimistic in the dates that we've given you. And that the capacity that has, the the date has to be given, has to be taken into account, the capacity and the other obligations that management have at the moment.
Yeah, I I I mean, I kind of get, I I I kind of get that. But I mean, we we, as an organisation, have for some time now recognised that over optimism is, has been an issue. And and that's been been tackled and is being being tackled in relation to the historic recommendations. At the time you wrote the recommendation, you didn't have the management response, so you didn't know the target dates that management would set. So I'm I'm not sure I I fully agree with that. But but your your observation goes on to talk about progress has been made and management believes sufficient focus is being maintained in audit actions. There was, I I'd need to go back into the text of the narrative, but it's an area where it says, you know, either limited resource or or not enough focus or priority being given to it. And I just think, you know, as an example of of inappropriate reference, I think that is wholly inappropriate because it's a complete opposite to what's actually been happening in practice. So but it was more the point, you know, to pick up something, but it's already a matter of record and then report it as as a kind of new recommendation just felt a little bit strange.
I I I think the point on, so the kind of, what we had said, indicating a lack of capacity or a lack of focus. We did in in narrative mention that management have explained that it is due to kind of over optimism bias that is expanding the narrative. In terms of whether or not it's appropriate for us to make a recommendation on something that the service is aware of, it's not entirely uncommon. And the reason for that is that essentially it puts it on our radar and that we then follow it up independently each year. So it's an awesome that, you know, because otherwise what happens is you run the risk of management or a board telling the auditor, oh, we're aware of that. And then the auditor never says anything, and then it never gets picked up and progress will not be made. That's the risk you run. So you have to make a judgment around, okay, this has been a relatively long running issue. And given the significant recommendations we have made, we want to make sure that we have this on record, that this was a, an area of concern for us around those, essentially those target dates, that we can pick that up next year and monitor that.
Okay, and Matt, you you would like to come in here, and then Mari?
Thank you, Chair. In some respects, it's to reiterate some of what you have said there. It's less about what's in the action plan itself, it's about the phrasing where this is initially raised earlier in the report. And there you reference that it's the capacity and the focus. And you also state that that is based on the views of management and internal audit. I've checked back through our minutes when we have discussed this since our appointment, and we have never said that it is about focus and capacity. We have said about optimism, and we've discussed that at length with management and at ARAC. And for me, that is a fair representation of our view. If that's Deloitte's view on the matter, absolutely comfortable. And as has been said multiple times, you're very much entitled to say your views and reach your conclusions. And as Connor said, keeping this on the radar and raising something again is not necessarily a bad thing or indeed out with your remit. But for me, that's stating something that we've said, which bluntly we haven't. The underlying point, I have no real issue with, and actually having a little bit of further focus on the need to focus on the recommendations, I think is fair and reiterating that point is one that we've made multiple times in meetings as well. And I'm comfortable with the underlying premise, it's that factual detail that I am uncomfortable with in its current wording.
Okay, that that that's helpful, Mari.
Yeah, Kim, do you know, this is an example where I think I'm getting a wee bit frustrated, we keep talking about the narrative to something and we almost are losing the point itself because actually I think everybody's in agreement with the point by and large. Although, Brian, I actually think that having this within the external audit is important because it is an area that's a board I know that we have, or we are aware of, we are monitoring. There's a question mark for me about the fact we're seeing progress in it. This makes me wonder, is the progress we are seeing in it sufficiently responding to the issue in the timeframes that we need? And I do think actually, without wishing to make myself too unpopular, I hope, but I would agree with Connor that actually, given the number of recommendations that are in here, it is a fair question to say, actually, will capacity be an issue? I, I get Matthew's point. And I think that actually there is a question in here that we need to, to make sure that we're live to the requests and the needs of S L T in terms of being able to do that work. And because this isn't any small amount, although I do also reflect the fact that Martin's correct, most of this is already in hand. So hopefully there isn't that issue, but I think it's a fair question to ask. But I, I feel as though we're getting a little lost in some of the narrative elements of it. I guess, Pat and Connor, I'm looking at you, the points are here and I'm worried that we're losing the point, if that makes any sense sometimes with some of the, the narrative element of it. But I don't even know where that leaves us. Sorry, that was a bit of a Mari ramble, but.
Like, there's, there's, there's always place for ramble. Don't, don't, please don't apologise. It adds richness to an otherwise less rich debate. But if, if, if we can just bear with this, so as just to make sure we don't miss any kind of glaring points. Leslie, did you want to come in on, on that point? Yeah?
Yeah, thanks. I thought it was a good point, Mari. I didn't think it was a ramble at all, but anyway. And the, this discussion just raises a question. Matt, you said there's a factual inaccuracy here and I, clearly Connor and Pat will pick that up. But on a process point, have, is it been consulted in factual, factual accuracy and have any points raised been addressed?
No, we weren't consulted on this matter at all.
So presumably that is something that can happen now. I don't know if there, just to check the other references to internal audit views.
Yeah, I think, sorry, just on the point, Matt, I think, yeah, it's, it's a wording issue on that. So the, the point around the issue being recognised by the committee by, by the service and internal audit was very much on the revisions of the implementation dates and so on. Whereas it's been read, I think, as focusing on the last part of that sentence, which is how we've interpreted that. So we'll revise the wording of that essentially to move what the service and internal audit have recognised to being before our interpretation of that. In terms of why hasn't been shared with internal audit, it essentially is that until it's agreed with, with management anyway, we certainly don't share any wider. And that's your point, you're going to all in Scotland and all of our reports, that's, that's, that's the approach to be taken. And then the timeline was very tight with this, with this committee meeting. So I'm very happy to, for internal audit to comment on any areas that are relevant to them.
Yeah. But ju- just to confirm, to answer your direct question there, Leslie, that was the only point that I had issue with. The rest I thought were fairly stated.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And that takes us on to a chunk roundabout capital planning and asset management. I don't believe there's anything which is ambiguous there, but Leslie, you're going to correct me. Please come in.
Sorry, sorry. Okay. I noticed Paul's got his hand up. Does Paul want to go first?
Well, indeed, Paul, over to you.
2.1 and 2.2 really interested me. And I'm not certain whether it's my ignorance as a new board member or whether there is something deeper behind this. And I'm happy to be put right by anybody. But particularly 2.2, the issue of a single backlog figure rather than the split down is something that would concern me quite a lot. And as, as far as I could see from the management response, there wasn't a straightforward agreed, we will try and split this up. Now, maybe it is impossible to split it up, but that was first of my concerns. And then on 2.1, the linking of the asset management strategy along with the strategic plan and the change programme. I'm surprised to hear that that is something which is being done and isn't sort of automatic. And the fact that it seems to be done in phases, perhaps that's a resource issue. But it talks about the fleet rather than the whole lot. And I'm just keen to be put right that I don't need to worry or maybe this is something which is actually more serious. And I, I'm asking whether it's John or whether it's the acting head of assets and property or I, I don't know.
Okay, I see Esas has come in. We don't have Ian Morris who would have answered that. Esas, can you respond to that, please?
Yeah, good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. Yes, the, in terms of 2.2, which is the first question you raised. We are now actually working on a backlog maintenance figure. I think what has happened previously, Audit Scotland reported a figure of £389 million insurmountable maintenance backlog and it was just one figure. And that wasn't broken down. What I am doing currently is looking at backlog and it was broken down by property, fleet and equipment. So I hope that answers that part of the question. It will be broken down. It wasn't broken down previously when Audit Scotland had a look at it. In fact, I've gone back to Audit Scotland, my former employer, to ask them for the, the base data as well, just to see what their data was to compare it with what we've got right now.
Can I just come back on that?
Yeah.
I, I'm a bit surprised that we don't have those figures because there's a huge difference between maintenance and repair and then replacement. And also when we're talking about a backlog figure requiring capital investment, which might in fact mean an upgrading of the service or an upgrading of the provision. So to sort of strip that back to the different elements, I would have thought was, was quite important. But I'm glad you're doing that. I'm.
Yeah. I think when an agreement is really important and it's, it's probably, it's information that we, we have and there's not been a light shone on it. So part of my role is to shine a light on, on that information and data and bring it back and actually, you know, put it in front of everyone.
I was quite in the sort of induction for new board members, this figure was 389 million, it was being toted around. And I, I immediately wanted to break it down because.
Yeah, yeah, so did I.
It's a symbolic figure, but you, you know it must be made up. Part of the management structure is to prioritise and you're not going to get 389 million. So how do you work out what you must have and those sorts of questions? And then that takes me on to my second point, which is 2.1, if you want to respond to that.
Yeah, so in, in terms of 2.1, there, there was a board request to have a look at the fleet strategy, which was most pressing. So that is what I'm working on right now. I'm a team of one at the moment. So trying to look at the fleet strategy and focus on that one. We are creating stakeholder groups and those same stakeholder groups will look at property and equipment as well. And I've got an advert out for two other additional team members. So I think a lot of those strategies will coincide, a lot of the consultation for them will coincide. And we will come up with one overarching asset management strategy. But fleet was the idea that the fire service inspector had particularly asked for and the board had asked for previously for us to concentrate on. So that, that's where my priorities have been focused on.
I can accept those are your priorities, but I am a bit concerned that we are having that, that gap when we have change programmes and property programmes. And anyway, I'm glad it's in, in the recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Paul. And of course, Ian at a, a previous meeting talked about there being in development and interim asset management strategy that would be produced by about this time scale by, by the end of March, I believe. So I, I don't know if that will help address this point at 2.1, Paul. Leslie?
Thanks. And just picking up on that point, at the last Audit Committee meeting, we were looking at asset management strategies prompted by some AZIT's work. And we were considering priorities and the reason why fleet was prioritised above property ones was to allow some of the SDMP work to progress further. And so the property work would come in just following that. We did specifically ask about the input of asset management into the SDMP work. And we were reassured in no uncertain terms, in Ian's normal manner, that Ian absolutely is nipping the chief and others' ears about, hang on a minute, it has to be deliverable, it has to be deliverable. So in the light of that discussion, that's why we're, we're looking at fleet and that's as a priority. The two points I had were on recommendations 2.1 and 2.2. And in both cases, I was unclear exactly what was going to be delivered by when. So there's narrative there in the management responses. But I wasn't sure whether we were getting a reviewed asset management strategy by the end of March or, or what we were getting. There's text about priorities and intentions, there's target dates, the recommendations are high priority. But I am unclear in both instances exactly who will deliver what by when. So if I could ask management to respond to that, please.
I can reply to that, Chair. Leslie, hi there. The, in terms of the backlog maintenance report, that will be completed before the 31st of March 2022. So that's being worked on right now and it's just going through different iterations. But it's a 2.2, the backlog figure and investment will be done. In terms of the asset management strategy, it is just a a tall ass to try and write the whole strategy in, in that time scale. And I don't really want to commit to it, Leslie, if, if I'm entirely honest. Not that I'm going to do it properly. And they'll all be started and I'm hoping the fleet strategy will be done by the end of March 22. And the other strategies will be well underway. But I was hoping at some point we could review the date for completion of the asset management strategy and push it on, along a bit.
Martin? Is the danger of always sitting here looking at a recommendation for ages and reading it over and over again? So Pat, I wonder whether on 2.1 you could just clarify for me the recommendation. Because I, it was clear, it's now no longer clear and that's possibly me reading it. But it seems to suggest that our asset management strategy should be reviewed to ensure it aligns against the capital we're being provided as opposed to the capital that we require to manage the service, which seems a really odd way of doing things. Because if, if Scottish government cut a capital again like they did in 15, 16, 16, 17, we're, we're, we're not being able to prove why we can't deliver on things.
I'll, I'll ask Connor to respond to that.
Yeah, so I think possibly you can look at the wording of that, that's how that's read. But essentially a thing that the service is working with the Scottish government to identify the needs of the service. And so that's what we're saying, once that worked, once you've identified the capital needs of the service, then you need to revise the asset management strategy aligned to those needs, not necessarily aligned to what you get. And bearing in mind that needs and what you get are often very different things. I think that, that when I as makes there around the target date, again, these are, so these are all provided to us. And we're very happy to consider we don't really push back on the dates as long as they're reasonable. And so as I know this is going on through, that you have two others that are assigned to you as well, also for 31st of March next year. So I think it might be worthwhile at the end of the exercise, just having a look at the dates overall. Just to make sure that essentially you're not giving yourselves something for us to criticize you for next year. And we'd rather you push back the dates to the end of next year or whatever doesn't bother us, as long as they're reasonable.
I don't think we can achieve that based on what I know EJAS is working on. And also, yeah, and it would be helpful to just clarify that because we're not going to necessarily align our asset management strategy against what Scottish government think we need. It'd be what we think we need as a professional organisation as opposed to what Scottish government think we need. And as we've seen in the past, it's two completely different things.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you, Martin. Leslie?
Sorry, Brian, just to come back on that point, I think that was a helpful intervention, Martin. I hadn't read it as once this work is complete, then review the asset management strategy. So just can, can we get the rewording, please, of the management responses? And EJAS, hopefully this will help you get something that is actually potentially deliverable. That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then that takes us into the, the section on the medium to long term financial planning. Two recommendations clearly agreed. Leslie?
Thanks, Martin. Sorry, sorry, thanks, Brian. 2.5, I was unclear as to who was going to deliver what by when. The management response services will, will ensure this is captured. What does that mean? The recommendation is the plan needs to be reviewed. And then there's talk about meetings and processes and capturing. Will the plan be reviewed by the deadline date?
I don't think we have anyone from, from Pod. John or anyone else? Or, or we just come back to Leslie on this point?
My only observ- observation is obviously I've had discussion with Liz and she's given that date. And therefore she's confident and I would assume that your point around, Lesley, around capturing is, is, you know, will they take account of it? Yes, they will. And will they make sure that they've addressed it? Yes, they will. That would be my understanding of what, what she's intending to do, unless anyone can direct otherwise.
Given it's, I, I accept that, John, given it's a, a document, well, given it's, it's an external audit document, it's this, I think it might be helpful for us to be more, just be clearer exactly in, in what we're going to do by when in that one. So perhaps if somebody could go back to Liz and just see if she can get that wording clarified, that I, I think that might be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, I think there's a general point there, Leslie, that where there, there is perhaps slightly less clarity or, or room for interpretation, you know, perhaps can we just look again at the responses to, to make sure that that's pinned down as much as it is able to. And I guess in that sense, using words like captured are probably not particularly helpful. You know, you either will or you won't do something. And what is that thing you're going to do and when are you going to do it by? Okay, thank you. And then that takes us on to budget setting. Any observations on, on, on that? I mean, I think it's, it's fairly clear. John, was there anything in particular from your perspective? Leslie? Sorry, you're on mute, Leslie.
Sorry, I had to do it at least once today, sorry. And the recommendation talks about review, budget setting process and reporting style. The response does not reference reporting style. Is that significant or not? Will you also pick up reporting style, John?
Yeah, I mean, I think the reporting style, and maybe Connor can come back on this, but the, the reporting style, I guess, was the fact that we had to make sure that all the information was made available to the board. That was the, the kind of point around the style, not necessarily, I think Connor made reference that there was, that, that there was not sufficient information given. So the style, if you like, was you should give more information to, to, to the board and you should present it in a way that gives fuller transparency. That's what I took as being the, the style comment. But it was described as style. I don't know if Connor's got any other element to add to that.
Yeah, just, just to confirm, essentially the, the style areas because you could continue going on what you currently do, which is having these separate sessions and having a fairly kind of reduced budget paper itself, but referring to those. Or you could consider whether or not you want all of that information reproduced within the budget report, except as considering what style of report the board or the staff would like. And we don't really mind which, as long as the information is at least signposted. And so that's clear what information the board is relying on when approving that budget.
Okay, so we would take from that, that we would reference all the information that we've had in previous sessions in terms of a budget strategy days or. in terms of a budget strategy days or information sessions. Because we wouldn't want to take all that and then repeat it again as part of a formal budget process and to get approval. That would seem not necessarily the best use of everybody's time.
I think just on that point, John, we just have to be mindful of the formality of the governance process that in order to, for example, approve a budget in a formal public board meeting, we need to have in front of us all the information we need to support that. Because otherwise we were not able to exercise and evidence the transparency that we need. But I accept we do that in a proportionate way, so that we're not replicating unnecessarily. Okay, and then that takes us on to capital planning and asset management. Which looks, dare I say? Lesley?
Yeah, two point eight, thanks, Brian. The recommendation is about the capital program being linked to LTFS, AMS and resource budget. And then the bottom line of the management response is that the service will update the LTFS and highlight the impact on the resource budget. Yeah, that's fine. Sorry. Yeah. Thank you. Sorry for that.
We've worn out, yeah. Thanks, Lesley. Okay. Right, so then we have workforce planning. And yeah. I don't know, I mean, Lesley? No, you're on mute. That won't work.
You first, Brian.
No, no, I was just going to say, I mean, I thought I was going to actually ask Gazette's whether they felt that the response actually did address it because it felt reasonably specific to me on second reading anyway. But I was just, Connor or Connor, do you feel that that response adequately addresses your recommendation?
Just describing, this is on two point nine.
Two, two point 10.
Two point 10, apologies. I think there was a slight disagreement in the narrative, which we included from management on this as well in terms of how we interpreted that training strategy around the actions and targets. The says the strategy will be reviewed to strengthen the link. And really, until we see the output of that review, it's difficult to know for certain whether actually addresses the point. But it's not to say that it's not possible that it will address the point.
Well, no, of course, but until it's reviewed, we won't know. But I thought the text in front of that final sentence was fairly specific in how the training strategy does link. And then with the commitment to look specifically at any shortfall there and deal with that. So I was just curious whether you felt that it did fully address it.
Yeah, if we had a specific issue with the response, we would have gone back to management and said, we do not think this addresses it. So we would have said previously, so we don't have a specific issue. Taking points around clarity for the pre recommendation, we don't have a specific issue with the response here.
That's helpful. Thank you. And Lesley? Oh, okay. Okay, and we've got another couple of recommendations on workforce planning, but these seem to be fairly clear. Okay, and then governance and scrutiny, we talked a little bit when I sought some clarity around about that. So I'm not sure we need to say anything more on that. Openness and transparency, we've already talked about that. The world has moved on since this recommendation was made. So I believe that that's already been addressed. And then that takes us on to a chunk on performance management framework. And before I even saw your hand up, Lesley, I knew you would come in on this.
Sorry, Brian, it's worse than that. I was going to just pick up on three dot two, please. And three dot two, particularly since they're aimed specifically at the board. On three dot one, the recommendation, the board should consider why the board's internal processes were insufficient. It's kind of, it's a, I find it an odd recommendation. Having said that, I'm not sure that the action actually does address the recommendation of the board considering why our processes didn't detect these issues.
Yeah, I mean, I accept your point. I mean, the recommendation says that there'll be policies that will come to ARAC. But it doesn't, what's missing is the process that will address the recommendation. But I did wonder whether, you know, because we there is an internal process about looking at policies and policy reviews.
Just Mark wants to come in as well.
Yes, I was just, I was just going to, in fact, Mark's popped his hand up. So, Mark.
Yeah, I'll come in on that one. I mean, I generally think by and large, your processes and the board's processes are fine. There's a couple of instances, like the report rightly highlights, where we didn't get it right. The fraud policy, risk policy, they are behind. We should have picked that up. But I'm going to make the excuse COVID, it was an incredibly fraught context. We had colleagues working from home, so things slipped through the gap. We'll pick that one up. In terms of the code of corporate governance, we made it clear, I think we've had several discussions with ARAC over last year. We're still awaiting the Standards Commission updated guidance in the Code of Conduct and we'll update our Code of Conduct in light of that. And again, that's something we've made aware to colleagues in Deloitte. So we will certainly look at tightening up processes, Lesley. There's no two ways about that. But let's see, I think there's a couple of instances this year that we've certainly not got it right. And we will pick up on that and make sure we do.
Yeah, Lesley.
All of that is, it's good, Mark, and I've got no concerns at all about that. The recommendation says the board should consider why the processes didn't prevent or detect or correct the identified issues. If we have said, we've been clear that we agree with all the recommendations. So if we agree that the board should consider why our processes didn't pick up issues, then we need to have that consideration. Is that sense?
We are developing our governance framework at the moment, so we will pick up on that as part of that. So there's a paper coming to the board on that in due course. Ali and the team are working on it just now, Lesley.
Fine, in which case can we make it clear in the management response that we will we will consider that particular point, why those things weren't picked up? Okay, thank you.
Do that. Sorry, that should have been in there, but we'll pick that one up and get it added in.
That's and sorry, Brian, just on three, two. Again, we have said we agree all the recommendations and the recommendation is the service should reconsider its approach. So have we? The management response gives a due date of March 2022, but we're seeing actually we have reconsidered it. I'm slightly confused about this one. Are the board planning and reconsidering or not? Have we reconsidered? And I've missed it. And if we are going to, if we're not going to reconsider, why have we got a due date in?
Yeah, I, it feels as if events have overtaken this, but perhaps Ali, could you just clarify exactly the position?
Maybe come in, Brian, again.
Oh, right, right, Mark.
I mean, I think as a board, you've reviewed this a number of times throughout the year, Lesley, about our approach to public access. We've followed Scottish government guidance all the way. We continue to do so. That's why we're still not meeting in public at the moment, well, not meeting in person, we are meeting in public. And again, the board have said they'll continually review against guidance over the course of the year. So we will take it from Scottish government about when is the right time for us to move back into in-person meetings. Hence the reason why we've left it open through the rest of this year. But if that guidance changes from government and the board decide otherwise, we've moved back into in-person meeting. Then we'll close that action off at that point.
Okay, thanks, Mark. We're happy with that.
Connor, you wanted to come in?
Yeah, we had quite a lot of discussion about this particular recommendation internally. And the reason is that the fire service has under a legislation much more stringent obligations on office, which has a lot of other organizations does, which are slightly older. And so what we've seen in local authorities must come out of best value orders that work when they're taken all the time and taken is that there's an expectation now, really that there should be kind of public access to meetings, not necessarily in person. Now, that's different things. And so what we see in a lot of organizations, including very, very small organizations, I've organizations which have like the two million pound budget and so on, where they will allow live access, they will publish it on their social media with a link to access it live and so on. And so essentially what we're saying here has the board considered whether what it is doing, which is publishing after the fact, is that as transparent and as accountable, as reasonably practicable, given that other organizations are doing it more so. And that's the point we're trying to make.
Okay, Martin, would you like to come in, please? So talking as the camp boss and the chief officer, I've been part of these conversations, both in board meetings. I would suggest it has been and decision the board is in board minutes. So I think we're discussing something that has been done. The board have made a decision, it's been widely discussed. You're perfectly honest, I'm going to get a little bit teed off of the conversation because it's there. It's in your minutes of the board meeting as a non-execent board members. So it has been discussed, Connor. I don't think it could be made any clearer than it has been made. I really don't. And this is the second time we come back to this conversation, the last hour and three quarters.
Martin, I could cite you to lots of board decisions where it's been discussed, where it's subsequently proven not to be correct. So I think, you know, I take your point, but the fact that it's been discussed doesn't mean it's closed. It's a closed issue from an audit perspective.
I mean, again, it wasn't a closed issue from a board perspective either, because the board agreed to continue reviewing the matter. Board being very clear on this. Kirsty has indicated that she can come in. Kirsty, would you like to come in, please?
Thank you. I wondered if revised management response might tighten this up because things have progressed fairly rapidly in this area. So I do believe that the board have at all stages wanted maximum possible public access and transparency. There were reasons, ICT reasons, largely not cultural reasons or board reasons as to why that was not possible. But as soon as it was possible, public access did happen initially through recordings and now through live access. In fact, this morning, we had a board meeting where there was live public access. So I think events have overtaken and I wonder if there's a language tweak around the board not needing to reconsider its position. It's actually about board perhaps was not able to be as transparent as it would have wanted to be. And it's recorded very clearly that the board did want to be transparent and to actually say in the management response that this issue is now resolved because there is live public access.
Yeah, no, that's helpful. Thank you. Thank you, Kirsty. Sorry, Mary, you have had your hand up. My apologies. I didn't spot it.
It's okay, Brian. Kirsty's covered a lot of it, but I would say that I think that there's a slight issue. There's two issues. One is that the recommendation from the auditors, if I'm honest with you, I think what Connor's describing is live streaming, which is not necessarily completely reflective in the text here. And actually, I think it's a fair point, you know, the board does need to consider, why are we not doing live streaming? We did consider that. It was an ICT issue, as Kirsty said. And I think that what we probably should have been is more transparent about actually making a decision that we didn't want to necessarily look at doing that at the time because there were a lot of other complications. There were cost implications involved and actually was that the best value for money for the people of Scotland to do that, considering the degree of public interest? I do think that the management response to that isn't maybe as clear as it should have been, as Kirsty said. I think that we've got to be really careful when we're talking about this. There's public access, there is live streaming, there is broadcasting. I think that there's too much ambiguity in both the recommendation and the response from management. And that I think a little bit more clarity would have been helpful in that circumstance. And also, I don't know how you close this recommendation off until you get the clarity, sorry, gentlemen, on the recommendation itself. Because if what you're saying is the only way we could reasonably comply with the Fire Scotland Act 2005 is to live stream, then that changes implication of the recommendation the board have to consider. So if we're saying that anything short of live streaming is not to the fullest of our ability because theoretically we would be able to do that, then that obviously means that the board have got to go back and review that decision. Regardless of the cost implications or whether or not that's the best value for the people of Scotland, am I making any form of sense? So I think, I think there's a bit whereby the recommendation you kind of need to clarify. Is it just that we're to consider or is it to say that actually anything short of live streaming is insufficient? So please go back and look at that again. Because without that, I think we'll be back here doing a sloppy thing all over.
Just to clarify on this point, the reason this was made, it's really had a report represented to the boards. And of course, we reviewed in form of opinion. So the initial report went to the board last April, said that, you know, it said you didn't have the infrastructure and those other organizations that have taken this approach and that's why you're taking that approach. And that's why it was okay. By August, the report that came out said you do know that the infrastructure is available, you can use it. But the board decided to continue not to have that public access. And at that point, we questioned, actually, given the premise of the original decision, no longer applied. We would question, as it was a reliable decision and the various situations weren't fully captured on what you're saying around cost. And then when it eventually came out in early part of 2021 around, we're going to our recordings, published recordings of meetings online, there was a decision taken not to, and in the board's minutes and there was a paper on this. It's around, there was concerns around whatever it's perhaps not feeling comfortable to say certain things and realizing they're being recorded about being live and not having an editing process and so on. And so that was our concern around that kind of transparency point was how it was presented to the board and the reasons for the decision the board took, rather necessarily that the decision it took itself was incorrect. It's the reasons for how it is documented. And this very well may have moved on, this report went out in draft with the initial recommendations quite a number of months ago now. So it very well may have, you know, so obviously it was out at a meeting this morning that was live. We weren't aware that that wasn't fully reflected in this report.
Okay, Kirsty, you had momentarily your hand up. Was that just from the previous occasion?
I had put it up because I wonder if there has been some kind of miscommunication and that possibly is reflected somehow in the capturing of minutes. Because I'm, I'm, I'm actually confused at the idea that in 2020, our ICT systems could in any way support this. I don't think we even had teams embedded as a system that would
If I can come in there, Kirsty?
Thank you, Mark.
That's exactly the point I was going to make. I think we need to clarify for the record that we were reliant upon Skype last year and we didn't have the capacity for public involvement through that, it just wasn't there. We introduced teams into the organization at the turn of the calendar year, but we had no board meetings in January or February. The first one was in March. And the March meeting, we put the stream online after the board meeting itself. We had to test out obviously teams and our usage of it to make sure we could actually do it properly. We weren't giving public control over the meeting rather than the ability to view, take part in the meeting the way they did in the past. And it's now from today, we're meeting where we have got that full public access because we now have teams working in the way in which it's supposed to work. So I mean, it's taken us time to get through some of that and make no apologies for it. But, you know, I think throughout that, the board have been aware of all of those issues. You have made rightly the decisions that you made, I think, as Mary said, and you continue to review it. And if there's a conclusion in this report, if there's a tidy up recommendation that we should move towards full public access, then fine, we are now doing that anyway. So we're almost at a point of going furiously ground in circles to end up agreeing with each other that the recommendation's probably been overtaken by events.
Absolutely, Mark. Tim, you wanted to come in?
Yeah, I really don't want to prolong this any longer than it needs to go on. But Murray is absolutely spot on. There is, there are not only technical misunderstandings here, but there's a lack of clarity about what's meant. So there is a significant difference between streaming and there, and for example, having a teams meeting that the public members can log into. They are not the same thing. And it's incumbent upon the auditors to be clear about what they mean. If we say we're not complying, tell us how we've got to comply and we'll tell you whether we And, and it's, it's incumbent upon the auditors to be clear about what they mean. If we say we're not complying, tell us how we've got to comply and we'll tell you whether we have or not. And I'm afraid this was kind of my point right at the start. The idea that this was not considered in, in considerable depth and discussed at length on a number of occasions is, is for the birds. So I just think this is, this is one that really didn't need to, to come up, it seems to me.
Okay. Okay. Well, keen to, keen to press on. I, I mean, this, this is one where, you know, as we've said in relation to others, we, we perhaps need a bit of a, a tweak to the management response and or the, the recommendation. But I'm sure we can work that, that out. And then we moved on to the, the chunk on the performance management framework and performance data. Lesley.
Thanks, Brian. Mark, I'm just wondering whether the, the action is hitting the recommendation square on. It's clear, it's there, there.
One, sorry, Lesley.
It's four, one. So the service should report on the processes undertaken to attempt. I struggle with that word attempt. But anyway, sorry, there's a risk of it coming across kind of quite negatively. But anyway, the service should report on the process that is undertaken to attempt benchmarking. This report should da da da. And then you're saying, Mark, that the annual performance report will include relevant benchmarking information. So it seems as though the auditors are saying, look further at whether you're doing as much benchmarking as you could be doing. And you're saying, well, we'll report and we'll tell you what benchmarking we've done. And they just seemed not quite to be hitting each other. But would welcome your thoughts.
When you'll get the annual performance report that we're working on just now, you'll see the, the moves of data benchmarking. With colleagues in England, Wales, we're working through their data just now that's produced by the Home Office. So we've got some relevant comparisons to, to make. And I think as we've said before, at Service Delivery Committee, we're working with Service Delivery colleagues and the data team on internal approaches to benchmarking. And I think Ross has spoken to the committee as well about the reality of benchmarking we'll get into is process exchange with other organisations. So the data is the first step. It's saying if somebody's doing better than us on home fire safety visits, there'll be a bit of work done with those services to say, well, what are you doing that we are not doing? And that'll be brought back into it. So that's what we'll kind of set out in that paper, what we have done, but what we will also do, Lesley, so that you as a board are cited on those future developments. And then again, if I need to tidy up the wording on that response, I'll make sure that that gets done.
I think that would be helpful. We've spoken about the development of the PMF in general, Mark. And I'm really glad that Deloitte's recognised the, the excellent work that's happened in the PMF. When we've spoken about next steps, those, some of those have been about more internal benchmarking. We do a lot of it already. But that is something that we are, are planning. So I would appreciate perhaps a wee bit more tweaking in the wording of that recommendation on that response.
I'll get that done.
Anything further on this chunk, Lesley?
Yes, on the next one. Four, two. We say that we don't have a specific forward-looking plan for service improvement. I've asked about this a couple of times in the past. And Mark, you've spoken about the public sector improvement framework, because as you know, my go-to is always just use EFQM. But what's the position? I had understood from previous questioning that PSIF was in place, but yet we say that we don't actually have a, a plan for service improvement. So I'm just struggling a bit to understand the two responses.
But I can't really speak in detail on it because it sits with Paul's team, Lesley, not mine. And just to give you an assurance that the PSIF is fully EFQM compliant, the two things work together. It's just a public variant of EFQM.
I'm absolutely familiar with EFQM and PSIF and I absolutely understand the relationship between the two, Mark. So the, the question was, I had been, I had understood that PSIF was in place and being used.
Yes.
But this appears to be saying that, just raising questions on that.
Again, we'll need to ask Paul to clarify.
Okay. So it's something perhaps, something they can come back to separately, but no change to the recommendation, to the response then?
I, I don't think we have the responsible officer here to, to talk to that, Lesley. So we, we'll need to pick that up later. And then we, we move a couple of recommendations on performance data.
Sorry, on Para four, three, or recommendation four, four, three. Connor and Pat, you talk about performance reports should include targets and trend data. They do mostly? Or is the, the key word there mostly? Are you saying that every single instance should? So I was struggling to understand what the concern was here.
That, that kind of links back to earlier narratives of the inconsistent approach to that performance reporting. Where some do include trend data, some targets don't include trends when trends would exist. Some don't include targets and some are like only for monitoring, but it's not explained why. And the trend data for monitoring isn't provided in a lot of cases, which makes monitoring quite difficult. If you don't have the historic performance. To bottom on that. So it is the inconsistency.
Okay.
Brought out.
Okay, on the, a monitoring on certain PIs, there, we have had full and repeated discussion on which PIs should have targets assigned and what should not. And that's taken place, audit committee, board and in offline discussions that have, that have been used to help progress the, the PMF. So I think that they, well, the board has signed off on the PMF and part of that is happy with the, those PIs where there are not targets set. I agree with the point on trend data being consistently provided where, where we have it. And I think that's pretty damn near the case, Mark, but there there may be one or two instances where not. Thank you.
I, I would agree with everything you've said there, Lesley. And again, back to the, the point from Deloitte. The standardisation of the look of the reports, the content, the style of the reports, something we agree with. And that's something, as you know, we're working away on at the moment. So there'll be a common feel to the dashboards and reports that go to committees in future. So we, no problems with that, that recommendation at all.
Okay. Okay. So we've got a recommendation on the qualities that seems to be accepted. There doesn't appear to be anything to discuss. So that takes us to the end of the action plan, with the exception of the follow-up from the previous year's actions. Just one observation on that, the, the partially completed action, the target day has moved by two years from the original target day. I was just curious as to why such a sharp lurch to the right.
So if I can answer that, then Brian, so a part of the, the, the point that was being made here was around Covid nineteen. As we know, Covid nineteen is still with us. And we have a, a programme of work of, of reset, renew, recover, sorry, recover, reset and renew. And therefore that is a, a piece of work that will take time for us to, to work its way through. And therefore the, the full impact of Covid nineteen won't really be fully reflected until we've got through some of those stages. So that was why we put a, a, a longer timeline on it.
Okay, okay. I, I get that. So this has gone through the, the, the action plan. And so thank you. Mark, your hand's still up? Did you want to come back in?
Apologies, no. So like I say, apologies.
No, no problem. So, so look, thank you very much for everyone contributing to that. I think we've identified a, a number of points round about the framing of some of the recommendations, the framing of some of the management responses. And it genuinely feels as if it'd be helpful to have, have these tweaks and, and these adjustments. And, and Pat, you, you offered at the outset of the meeting to, to listen to points that the committee would want to collate round about kind of tone. And, and so we will collate and, and get them back to you. And I appreciate that. I feel as if we've had a constructive discussion about, about the report focusing on, on the action plan. So hopefully, you know, we're in a slightly better place now than, than when we were at, at the beginning. And, and I want to kind of reiterate that this is a valuable piece of work in terms of supporting continuous improvement. And a lot of good stuff here. And no one has disagreed with one exception to the recommendations that have been made. So twenty seven out of twenty recommendations are squarely accepted. And, and that's a very positive position to, to, to find ourselves in. The progressing of the, the, the work on the action plan, once it's, it's finalised, we will fall within the protocol that we have for dealing with external reviews and we can discuss exactly how that happens. But I would envisage something coming back to the October ARAC so that we can get some early sight of how that's going to pan out. In terms of the, the process then, Pat, on time scales, how does that look from, from your point of view? What's, what's your time scales for? I'll get back to you and then, and then going back around the loop a little bit.
The, the time scales are fine. I mean, obviously we would want to submit this to Audit Scotland before or at the same time at the latest as our eyes are two sixty in the financial statement. So we, we, we've got a bit of time. And Brian, to sort that out. So no problem with the timelines. You know, I'm happy for you to come back with your suggested wording changes that, that, to, to address any concerns the committee might have. And, and on the one recommendation where we've disagreed, I think Connor and I both feel that that recommendation's still valid, but it's okay for, for us to agree to disagree on that one. We just felt that there had been a number of ad hoc changes to the finance team. And it was more the process by which the structure had been established rather than the actual, I think, the structure itself. And we just felt that because a number of recommendations in the report relate to finance, we just felt that that was something that we should bring to the committee's attention. But as I say, it's fine to agree to disagree on that one.
Yeah. And, you know, I, I, I can really see how, looking in, you would see that, I guess, as committee members, we have been a little bit closer to these adjustments as they have occurred. And, and as we all know, sometimes opportunities arise through staff, unplanned staff movement, but it makes really good sense then, you know, make some sort of change to the, to the structure as a result of that. So, so certainly from the committee's perspective, I, I don't think we are concerned about that at all. But I appreciate we are a bit closer to it and can see that actually more in real time. But, but as you say, it's perfectly okay to agree to disagree. Ali, well, I don't know if you've had any success in trying to record the, the actions from that discussion. I suspect not. But is there anything you want to add?
I just think, just in more general terms, you know, if captured the, the responsible persons within the external audit action plan, or just to, you know, give other consideration to the responses as detailed and the recommendations and should be complete clarity for the committee and for the purpose of further scrutiny. I just captured it on that basis, but obviously you discussed that in detail as you went through. Which we can draw from the, from the minute and then be able to kind of circulate that. So just so that people are clear. And for example, Liz, who wasn't present today, has got a clear understanding as to what's been, what's been asked for. And the only other one really was around the further engagement required from a committee and executive perspective around the draft text and all the to consider the narrative and context before being finalised, that it's still being drafted. So again, you mentioned that yourself, Brian, but capturing that as a specific action if you, if you so wish. That's how I've summarised them into the two.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I think we, it would be fruitless to try and capture specifics and we'll, we'll deal with it at that level. And, and we, and, and we can, we can have discussion offline to, to just exactly choreograph how we, how we do all of that. So are there any other points or on, on the report that we haven't covered that anyone else wants to, to add? No. Okay. Well, look, thank you very much to, to everyone. I appreciate your, your openness and, and willingness to, to discuss and face some of these things head on. So really do appreciate that. And, and we will respond in the terms we've agreed, Pat, and come back to you in reasonably good time. So, so thank you. So if that's everything, I'll draw the meeting to a close. The next meeting of this committee is on the fourteenth of October. Okay. So until then, thank you.